Good evening. I'd like to call to order our meeting of November 14th, 2012. All members present, Linda? Thank you. The first item of business would be the approval of items by consensus.
Good evening, everyone. We have four items on the percentage under the approval of the minutes from October 24th. Approval of the out-of-state field trip to Bennington, Vermont for the Wilmington High School wrestling team. Acceptance of a gift from Cassett of $17,000 in order to support our Italian program, and the warrants.
Thank you. I think we'll put the first three together. The approval of minutes of, oh, some people, no. Approval of the minutes of October 24th, 2012, regular session. We better do that by itself because we had someone absent. All right. Could I have a motion? Mr. Hayes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of October 24th, 2012, regular session.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mrs. Burns? Allohs in favor? Thank you. I'm six to one. One abstained. Okay. The approval of the out-of-state field trip to Bennington, Vermont, and the acceptance of the gift from Cassett. Do we have a motion for that? Mr. Mullis?
Make a motion for approval of the out-of-state field trip to Bennington, Vermont, for the wrestling team and acceptance of gift of $17,000 from Cassett.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Bonish. Thank you. Allohs in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Next item would be the warrants, payroll warrant of 10-24-12. Oh, I didn't want to say it. You did. Yeah. Oh, Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion for warrants and payroll, 10-24-12.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? Thank you. Allohs in favor? Oh, no. Don't be sorry. I know. Five in favor, two abstain. Thank you, Linda. The warrants FS4, FS5, FS6. Mrs. Bonish?
I make a motion to approve the warrants FS4, FS5, and FS6.
And do we have a second? Dr. Quick? Thank you. Allohs in favor? Six abstain. One abstain. So, six to one. Okay. And the next group of warrants would be CB4, SPED04, SPED05. Dr. Quick?
Motion to approve warrants CB4, SPED04, and SPED05.
Okay. And do we have a second? Mrs. Bonish? Allohs in favor? That would be, one, two, three, four, five, six, and allos abstain. One abstain. Okay. The next item would be G405, R208, and R209. Mrs. Burns?
I make a motion on warrants G405, R208, R209.
Okay. Second, Mrs. Bonish? Allohs in favor? Seven. Thank you. And L9, L10, L11, L12, and L13. Mr. Hayes?
Make a motion to approve warrants, as read by the chair.
That's a good idea. Do we have a second? Mr. Mullis? Allohs in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. All right. Now, we, Superintendent, it's before.
I actually have four items under reported. I'm going to add a fourth one. Just an announcement. But my first one, I'd like to invite Joanna Torres up to the table. Every year, probably the most wonderful thing I get to do as superintendent of school is to honor a 12th grader who, in my mind, epitomizes all that a student at Wilmington High School should be. The MASs is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and they sponsor this award on an annual basis. Your award is intended to be given to someone who has distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. Joanna Torres is a senior at Wilmington High School who embodies all of the above. For the past three years, she has taken a rigorous course load and has excelled in all of her academic subjects. Within the high school community, Joanna is an active member of the Environmental Club, the Science Club, Wilmington High School ambassadors, and the Model UN program. Through each of these activities, Joanna has had the opportunity to explore many different interests. She was inducted into the Wilmington High School chapter of the National Association. This is an honor bestowed upon students with a cumulative average of 88% or better. Joanna has earned her place in this group. Her service can be characterized by her warm spirit and willingness to work hard. She has really worked hard to gain the respect of students and faculties alike by not only being an excellent student, but an excellent person. Outside of school, Joanna is a member of the Church of the Good Shepherd in Reading, Mass. Through her church, she is active in youth programs, outreach ministry, and participates in services held regularly. She has a strong commitment to her family and to her Hispanic heritage. She is kind, honest, and a genuine young woman who's made great strides through her four years at Wilmington High School. When we talk about her parents' students for career and beyond, Joanna epitomizes all that we hope that every student who graduates from Wilmington High School is when they complete their four years at Wilmington High School. So, it's my honor this evening to present you with the Massachusetts Association School Committee, excuse me, Superintendent Award for Outstanding Senior at Wilmington High School. Congratulations. While I'm doing it, I also want to commend her parents and her sister who are in the audience because you can't do this alone. As you know, you've had incredible support from your family, and we know they're going to continue to support you. So, all the best to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Lyle Torres family, for all that you've done to support your daughter.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you for coming on today.
She's a pride to have it early.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Good luck.
Good luck. One of the prizes is you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Feel free.
We'd like to be respectful.
The next thing on the agenda I included is the SEEM Executive Director's Report and the Professional Development Report. As you know, the law changed last year around collaboratives because of some unfortunate misuse of funding in one of the collaboratives. I'm proud to say that the SEEM collaborative, which Wilmington belongs to, has had annual audits every year, has volunteered to have the program review last year, and we came out on top. In order to meet the obligation of keeping you informed of what is going on at SEEM, I will be enclosing the Director's Report four times a year to have you get a better idea of what SEEM is all about. In addition, I'm chairing the board this year, so I also serve on the Finance Committee as well. I would like to, at some point, invite Executive Director Kathy Lawson to come to the meeting just so that you can meet her, because she's doing an outstanding job. SEEM provides district placement for some of our students.
Anyone have any questions or comments? I just wanted to check, is that our feed?
Yeah, I'll go fix that.
All right.
We enclose, we are on bedtime reading the FY12 end of the year report that Mr. Agiero prepared. It is a report that takes him a couple of months to do, as required by state, and is, will be reflected on the DESE website next year as far as the per pupil costs.
Can I ask just a very quick, simple question? Is this the typical format that I, more familiar with seeing it presented in a different format? I just didn't know if this was a specific format when you presented for the, to the DESE, or if it's a new format you're using?
Yeah, it's a program, an Excel, gigantic Excel file that is, this is the way it's set up for the Department of Development and Secondary Education.
Okay. I'm just curious. Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question. It's not about any numbers or anything. I'm just trying to find, who are they on page? Page, Schedule 1 of 8 of 20, where it says Classroom Instructional Technology? What are the types of contracted, because there's a $71,746 amount for contracted services under instructional technology? I'm just trying to get an idea of what that involves.
That could be some of the work we did with the fiber network to bring technology into the schools and to the classrooms in construction.
Thank you. Any other questions? You lucked out tonight, Mr. Agiero. It's such a clear report.
I just would like to add that, if you recall, last year Scott Sensivert came to a meeting to talk about the Alice program, which is a new form of training for student safety, that, and we will be moving forward with training 6 through 12 in the next few months with the hopes of introducing it to the community in March. So, we will keep you abreast of the Alice training.
Okay.
As is part of our, well, hopefully, strategic plan, we have been doing monthly evacuation in all buildings, and we have a Safety Committee chaired by Bob Appoloni, and that meets monthly to work on making sure that we are doing all that we can to protect all our students.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Our next, oh, sorry, Dr. Quick.
I just wanted to make a comment about the, the officer that came that night. I thought that was, I loved being there for that. It was very instructional, and it really made sense, so I think it's great that they're going to be going ahead with that. I think it was a great, going to be a great.
Winchester is also going to be moving forward with it as well, so.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business, whole business, strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chief Woman. This is, Strategic Plan has been in the works for probably too long, and I understand that. This started back in October of 2010 with a committee that worked with the company to survey students, staff, and parents to get a picture of where we wanted to move the district based on community input. At the time, we had 242 community members, 263 staff members, and 948 students fill in surveys. And what resulted from analysis of the surveys was a feeling that the school system should move forward in working on science and technology, professional development, facility, continuing with facilities, technology, and support services. Communication, which was in the last plan, we have taken out because it's, actually, we succeeded in all the goals we had for it, and we believe that it's intertwined in all that we do. Now, we, with the new Connected, which used to be called Alert Now, system with the capability of, you know, doing emails, it is just a wonderful way of getting information out to people quickly, and principals are using it effectively. We get good feedback from parents. Thanks to our Assistant Superintendent, we have a grade-in-the-loop show monthly that showcases all that, all the good that's going on in the schools, and the Her newsletter, my newsletter, Principal Tracy and Assistant Principals at the Middle Schools blogs, Mr. Sheen's blog, certainly is getting information out to the community. So, we feel we have met that, met that goal. I think that clearly, as we move forward, underlying all of this is the work of state mandates and what's going to be coming down the pipe, which is the new evaluation system and adoption of the Common Core. We are ahead of the game with the Common Core frameworks. At the elementary level, we have intertwined the Common Core in our English Language Arts and Writing Program. In math, as you recall, Terry Visami left, and Lisa Ippolito stepped forward. She's a classroom teacher to do some of the work, and we will be presenting to you later on this year, and I saw the fifth grade one yesterday, it was phenomenal, is, they have completed the fifth grade math curriculum that is, adopts the Common Core, and we're using a template from the state of Connecticut that we'll be using K to 12 for us, so that we will actually have, at the end of this whole process, in all content areas, a curricula that is based on the Common Core, and that can be put in the hands of every teacher in this district, and that should be happening. So, that's, underlines some of the work that are in the themes. Obviously, with your support in the hiring of the, of Paul Monica, the STEM coordinator, couldn't have come at a better time because that's where the state is focusing a lot of their energy. They've now turned, changed it to STEAM. I'm not so sure. I appreciate them burying the arts in science, technology, math, and engineering, but I think they just don't want to leave the arts out. Mr. Monica has been working on getting the high school and middle school teachers to think about interdisciplinary units, so I think you're going to be seeing some exciting work over the next couple of the years. Obviously, what has been at the forefront of my plate and your plate, and why this has taken longer to come before you, is the high school building project, which took up all of our energy and continues to take up all of our energy in hopes of waiting for some good news. We are, as I was, I was at a superintendent's meeting today, and, you know, we should have, our gym should be down, our field should be almost built, and unfortunately, that has not happened, so we need to start putting into place a new plan with the hopes of starting a new timeline for the construction of the high school, which will mean an impact on activities, starting with graduation. My belief is if this gets done before school gets over, we move immediately to start the work because every day we are not working is an extra dollar we're going to have to be asking the town for. And it's estimated that, right now, it's about $3 million more it will cost us just by having lost all that time. I'm optimistic that we're going to move forward soon, but we still have an appeal to the Superior Court that could happen, so we will keep you posted. Professional development probably is the most important aspect of teaching that you can fund because no matter what the building looks like or what the supplies are, I will always feel that the most important part of my job is focusing on the teacher in the classroom and the students because it is the teacher that has the lasting effect on what happens. And professional development has to be ongoing. It has to be embedded in the work that teachers are doing every day, and it has to focus on the 21st century skills that we've been talking about, and helping teachers think about how we integrate content area so that students are doing more project-based learning and that they're prepared to go out into this world and have skills to continue on to work in an environment that's very different than what it was for any of us when we left high school. Although I believe that the teacher is the most important investment in the schools, we do need the technology, and we do need to focus on how you take a middle school that was once state-of-the-art and now is 12, 13 years old, and the equipment there is, has seen its day, how we finance that and provide the same opportunities for the middle school teachers that the high school teachers will have and that hopefully the elementary teachers will have. So, that will be a focus. And always of importance is support services for our students. So, the plan has those themes. I, last night, looked back at the goals of the individual school improvement plans, and I think that in all of the plans, you can find references to these themes, which is what should be happening. If you look at my goals, there's reference to these themes because that's what the whole idea is about. So, I'll be glad to answer questions. Oh, does that committee matter? Mr. Mullis and Mrs. Kane and I meant to review it, and they can also answer questions.
Do we have any, any questions? Mr. Hayes?
Okay. So, I just wanted to first thank Superintendent Benton and her team and the two school committee representatives for doing a really good job on this, the strategic plan. And, you know, if this is it, and this is what we're voting on tonight, then I'll support it. I support every theme, every goal, every strategy. My only concern is some of the strategies that may be missing, particularly under the technology theme. So, if you go to Theme 4, which is technology, Goal 1, this is on page 14, just, I want to make two quick points. So, number one, there's no reference to completing the goals laid out in the district's current five-year technology plan, nor is there any reference to the creation of a new five-year technology plan once the current plan expires next school year. And so, to contrast that, and you don't have to turn the page, but just trust me, under Theme 2, Goal 1, page 12, when we're discussing facilities, the third strategy talks about the creation of a strategic plan for all facilities and that the plan will be prepared, adopted, and carried through. So, I was thinking, sort of for consistency's sake, you know, as a goal under the, you know, the technology theme, how about, you know, something along the lines, I'm no, I'm no good at actually, you know, creating the correct words here, but something like carrying through with the current technology plan and preparing and adopting a new one next year? So, maybe adding that as a possible strategy under the technology theme. And then, my second point, having sat in on all but one of the, of the Technology Task Force meetings over the last three years or so, aside from professional development, the three constants of discussion have been installing projectors and MIMI O boards in every classroom, fully implementing the Aspen Duke Information System, including the Family Portal, and then taking steps towards a one-to-one learning environment at the middle school and high school. And I don't really see any of those reflected in the strategies for the next three years. And I guess my big concern, my question would be, you know, are we not planning on implementing one-to-one at the middle school or the high school until 2016? And if, you know, if we are planning on doing it within the next three years, then why wouldn't it be in the plan? So, those are, those are sort of my comments regarding technology. But as I say, stepping back, looking at the entire plan, I will support it, and I just want, again, want to thank the committee for doing a fantastic job.
Superintendent Benton?
We, I think you have the wrong report because we added that one in, Robert. That's the one that we did add in, was the one-to-one. So, and I don't see it.
No, I don't have it under.
Yeah, I don't need, yeah, and I.
Did we add it in?
And I'm afraid that April, because that, I did, we did add in. I did not add in the technology plan, and I'll tell you why. A strategic plan is about provision for this district. A technology plan is a requirement of the Department of Education. We have to do that along with nine pages of mandates that I think you all got, because I heard from Tom Scott today, gave it out last week.
Oh, yeah.
MASs. So, that's something that has to be done, and I'm not a believer in putting what's required into a strategic plan. I believe a strategic plan is about a vision of what we want to happen. That's, that has to happen, the tech plan.
Right. No, I understand.
What we have not done a good job of, and I will, have already booked Neil in for the spring.
Fantastic.
He will come by, come back every year and present his findings, and we will invite George Hooper to present his facilities plan. But the tech plan is a requirement, so that's not included in here. I, we did add in the one-to-one.
Okay. Because that was sort of my major concern.
And bring it around. So, I mean, I didn't ask that I bring this back in December for a vote.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
With everybody.
That would be fantastic. And so, just Superintendent, thank you for, for your explanation.
No, I'm glad you pointed that out.
And, and then also, I'm glad that Mr. Hooper will come to talk about the facilities plan, and Mr. Ellis will come to talk about the technology plan. And I got everything I wanted, so I appreciate that.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that on the facilities plan, I thought we actually just had a report on that recently when we talked about what was happening with each of the schools.
But, yeah, but it doesn't hurt to have George Hooper.
Oh, no, I want him to come back, too, but I, but I did feel that we had been updated on the facilities.
Oh, yes.
At this point.
Can I ask a question, follow-up?
Sure.
Is there an existing facility plan?
He has one.
Because I've never seen it, so I guess that would be my point.
Yeah, yeah, we believe he does.
We believe so. Okay. So, that's what, that's sort of what I'm getting at. I'd like to see the plan and, you know, on an annual basis, just be updated and, you know, from him as to what's going on.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I totally, I totally agree with that. But just in case, should people not think that we've been updated? I, I felt that we had been updated.
Oh, sure. Oh, I, I mean, I.
About what's been, we've had different meetings where people have told us, you know, what we're doing. I don't think you were implying that we weren't updated.
That's right.
No. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Mrs. Burns?
I know that there was some discussion with regards to going from a five-year strategic plan to a three-year strategic plan and from conference. My brain's still hurting from the information that I received, and we'll get into it at the next agenda item, but I think by moving to a three-year strategic plan, especially where I see our district now with the high school piece, and once that gets, when it gets built and we start moving forward and getting the classrooms up and running, as well as how that'll impact all of the district, I think being able to streamline certain goals and strategies and revisiting them, having like a schedule as to where we revisit them so we can modify them and add and take away, I think would, might be more effective for us as well as maybe save on time in the long run with, with information and when, you know, the progress reports with regards to where we are with our goals. And that's something that I do invite the committee to, to think about, and I welcome any feedback with regards to that thought, if I've articulated well enough.
I would just, oh, Dr. Quick there.
Since I wasn't at the, the meetings with you guys, what, what did you take away from that that would make you think that a three, doing, doing the three-year plan might be more efficient than doing a five-year plan? And the only reason why I ask that is because we do, we do go back to it every year to take a look at it. I just want to make sure that I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that we're not bogging administration down with making plans all the time and allowing them to administer to their work.
Of course.
So, I want to know why you're thinking that.
Oh, can we let, oh, Mr. Mullis?
Yeah, I just got a quick question. Is the new strategic plan that we got, isn't that a three-year plan?
Good choice. You have a choice.
Okay.
Either five-year or three-year.
Okay.
Lyle Kurtman of Future Management is a company that, they typically go, come into districts and help create strategic plans for certain districts and get them kind of lined up.
Yep.
And organized. His thought, what he stated at the convention was that research has shown that five-year plans in this day and age have not worked as effectively with moving the, the goals of the district along and the management of those goals. Not to say that we're not doing it currently, but by doing so, it, it keeps it as a living plan, which is what strategic plans, as you know, are supposed to be, as opposed to books sitting on the shelves, which I think he's referring to other districts, but, and I just thought that in the long run, not to bog, it's not, certainly not to bog down administration, but to keep it hot on the plate and revisited in it so that it remains a viable plan of action for the district. And I believe, maybe Mr. Hayes can also contribute. And I believe, maybe Mr. Hayes can also contribute to that, since he was a part of that. But, but that was the thought plans, that, I think, research has shown that five-year strategic plans just aren't as effective as they once were, in the changes that are coming down from, in the education and state requirements and things of that sort.
Thanks. Mr. Hayes.
Just to follow up with what MJ said, I also was at that panel discussion, it was strategic planning and the error of accountability, and I really enjoyed it. And, you know, I'm not an expert in strategic planning because I sat in a panel discussion for 50 minutes, but I did, I did, I did gain some insight and knowledge I didn't have other, you know, previously. And just four questions to ask yourself, looking forward five years, are needs going to be the same as they are now? Will we have a new superintendent and various new leadership team members in five years? Will we have a very different-looking school committee in five years? And do we actually need five years to accomplish everything laid out in the, in the plan? So those are four questions to ask yourself. And it just, just to what MJ said, I mean, it seems like the research, the best practices is pushing districts to go with a three-year plan. Many of our neighbors, Andover, North Andover, unfortunately, other districts didn't have their improvement plans, I'm sorry, strategic plans on their website, so I didn't quite get a full, you know, I didn't look at all seven or eight. But several of our neighbors are also doing three-year plans. So, the research seems to indicate that, I'm going to trust the experts. Obviously, I'd like to hear what Superintendent Benton has to say about it and her leadership team, but, but I certainly would be at least open to the idea of doing a three-year plan.
Okay. I, one of the things when, when I know that people were talking about going to the three-year plan, I went back and really read this thoroughly, and I think we could say that this is a one-year plan, because the word annual is totally throughout, annual, 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 through these charts. It says that the strategic plan will be reevaluated annually. It starts out with that, in the very beginning, it talks about it has to be an annual, must be reviewed and revised annually to ensure that the resources are going. So in my mind, we have already, we started with a five-year plan originally, and as Superintendent Benton said, everything in the system has been aligned, aligned to that plan, including our curriculum renewal cycles. They're in plan, they also basically are aligned to that plan. So for us to come in now and change it to a three-year plan, for me, I think it would be a lot of extra work on the part of the administration. But that's just me thinking that. And I feel very secure that it's okay to have a larger plan with little parts in it, and I see that as we have these little parts in it for us to look over. And, so I, I feel that we have started out on this route, and three to five years, I don't know if it makes that much difference, I don't know if it's that important, the number of years, because we are looking at this plan and we're going through annually revising, so that anything that came up that wasn't already being worked on, that we felt needed to be worked on, could be put into the plan and be worked on, because it is a fluid plan. So that's, I think that's where I feel at this point. Mr. Mueller's?
I just want to confirm what you're saying. So even though it is a five-year plan, we have the flexibility to revisit everything in the plan and add on to the plan? So the reality is, by going to a three-year plan, we'd have to go back and change pretty much most of the plan as, as is, as opposed to staying with a five-year plan and being able to go back every year and revisit it and be flexible to make any changes or any, and do we have the flexibility to add anything to the, to the plan from year to year?
Mrs. Burns?
He also spoke about two other measures that might kind of speak to what you've just brought up and to your concerns with regards to it. There are two other ways that strategic plans can work with goals, and what, he refers to them as being streamlined, as well as pinpoint, which are those goals that are on a more urgent course of completion. They typically take, he, they typically take four months to create in a year, and they're supposed to be met in a year. We could, we could certainly do that within the strategic plan as well, which is kind of like, I think, the format of which we've been doing, if, if that's the, been the measure. So, very well, in fact, we could be, you know, doing that.
Could I, could I ask if this, I just want to say another thing, without calling it. Could I ask, is there, because he said this, okay, we look back at what we've already done, and what we're doing as, as a community, he's one vision, we have this, we have a five-year plan vision. In terms of putting this all together, do we, I know we're enthusiastic and we're excited about things, but then, as I look through this, I think to myself, we're talking about strategies, strategies to initiate action and indicators of success. We, as a school committee, work on the overview, and then we give it to our administrators to put forward what they think works best for our community. And to me, if this five-year plan is what was put before us, the five-year plan for us at this point, we need to consider this, that it's what our administration has put before us, and if there's something specific that we want to put in here, if you have something specific in mind, you bring it forward to them, and then they'll, they'll add it, if it's something that they feel we need to add. Do you see what I'm saying? So, but I'm thinking that, I'm going, I'm going to let this Benton, please, speak first, and then, okay.
So I heard someone asked what my recommendation is, and I have to tell you, I'm thinking back nine years ago, when I was interviewed for the position of Assistant Superintendent, and Joan Duffy asked me what I thought of strategic plans, and I could, I remember my answer quite well, it was up at the Roman House. Unless it's something that people, everyone buys into, it's a book that sits on a shelf and collects dust. I went into this process when Bill McCalliffe was here, and I think it was a good process because what we came up with was a living document, that, as Mr. Mueller's pointed out, changes and needs to be changed as we move forward, even though it was a five-year plan, and then we came to this one. Frankly, the amount of time that the committee put into getting this, to this point, was a lot of time. And I'm, I'm curious, and we'll call him, because I know Lyle very well, why they're going with the three-year, because it is so much time. And frankly, I don't buy that a new superintendent, because of a new superintendent coming in, that you should change the strategic plan. Actually, a new superintendent would welcome walking into the middle of a strategic plan, so that there's something in place that he or she can work with until they get to know the community. A strategic plan is supposed to be a long-range plan, so there's something, what is Lyle calling it? Because that's not a strategic plan, if it's something that's going to be changing constantly. I'm willing to listen to him, but I have to say that we probably got the most feedback in this, putting together this plan than anything else we've ever done, as far as getting students involved and the community involved. And I think it's one that can easily be adjusted when a new regime comes on board, but it's also a safety blanket for all of you, so that there are goals in place, if there are changes in administration or a school committee, that can continue to drive the, the district. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, I think Mrs. Burns was first.
I thank you. I was, the only reason why I did bring, bring it up, it was that if it allowed a tool, great, I know there would be reorganization involved in it, that the administration and the committee, who have much further knowledge with the rhythm of things, if it would be a better tool, a more effective tool for the administration in the, in the long run, that was the only reason why I would present it, and I very much welcome your input, because it, it all does affect what you do in your daily, your lives, but if, in fact, if it would save an amount of time, because it's revisited at certain cycles of the year, that, that was my thought process with regards to it, although I don't know how it would impact, and that was helpful information.
Mr. Hayes?
So I was the one that asked for your recommendation, and I'm glad I got it. So obviously, that is a huge factor in how I would vote. You know, I would just say, you know, I guess two things. First of all, I've, I've been on the board three years, and to my recollection, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm confused, but I don't remember us ever going back and adding to or subtracting to the previous strategic plan. So I guess it's good for me to know that that option is out there. And then my second, my second point, is a sort of a request. What I really liked about the strategic plan is the survey piece that the committee engaged in, reaching out to 900-plus students and, you know, 500-plus combined parents and community members. And, you know, I wish, you know, I wish there was a way to do that, just not when we're prepping for a strategic plan, especially for, if, you know, by all indications, we're going to wait five years for the next strategic plan. I mean, is there a way that we can survey the community and the, and the students and parents and teachers more, more frequently than, than every, every five years, like a comprehensive survey?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, but we have to be careful, because right now, for example, there's been a request, and I agree to it, and I think it's a great request, by the town manager, because actually I suggested it, that we survey the kids, students about, get their involvement on Yentl Farm, what should go there.
That's great.
So we're going to be doing that. As you know, on November 28th, there's a program on substance abuse-
Right, I saw it last night.
-and we are surveying the students through the Department of Public Health and parents on that topic. You need to be careful that you don't-
Oversurvey.
-oversurvey. So it just has to be at different times. I, I, we survey the staff at the end of every year-
Oh, sure.
-about the professional development.
Yep, absolutely.
So maybe there's something we can do with the community at, at a different time of the year, to get more feedback. But I just think, we shouldn't be doing surveys one on top of each other, so we have to be careful about that.
I agree with what you said there, yeah.
I'm a little, I guess I'm, I'm going to say here, I'm getting a little confused because, for me, the strategic plan is the major ideas that have come for our, for us as a community, and we're working on these, part of our goals on this, these ideas. But I'm wondering if people are thinking that we're missing something, that, that there's something not being presented in the strategic plan that we need to worry about, because I've always felt that, that the administration has brought to us everything that we need. I haven't seen anything missing in the last few years. And so, I agree, maybe there haven't been formal reports, but I think we've been reported on, on all of these items. I think I know where they all stand, and I'm thinking that new people coming on certainly don't know where they all stand and, and need to be updated, these things. But my feeling is that we're worried that we're going to miss something. Am I misreading this? I, I'm just not sure what is the issue, but I'll start with Mr. Mueller's.
I just, my, my, I just want to say something. My feeling about a strategic plan is, it's like we said, it's a long-term vision, right? And we've done a lot of work to, to go through this process, and we have the ability to revisit it on a regular basis and make any changes that need to be done, but what this is, is a long-term vision. And, and I think five years personally is, is the right amount of time, and we've put a lot of work into it. I, I'm not sure if, if, you know, changing it makes sense. It does make sense to revisit it regularly and make sure that we're measuring what the plan is, and if we're getting, if we're reaching those goals. And if we have the ability to do that, and if we have the ability to, to revisit, and if we have to make changes, make changes, and I think we're, I think we're in a good place, but that's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
Thank you. In, in my opinion, which I stand, I, I think I look at a broader perspective, not that we are missing something, but if, with the change of the, the government and the economy, and there's a lot of things that impact us, the state comes down with a new thing, a mandate, granted, that's not a part of the strategic plan per se, but to kind of, I'm not saying polling the community every year, but maybe midway point, and see where the stakeholders see as their needs. Because even though we are working progressively towards the goals that they had seen in year one, or prior to year one, in implementing this, I think it would be important to poll, at least in the halfway point at some point, to see if, if those views have changed in any way, because there is so much change that goes on, on, in the world around us, that, and that, and that's what, I think, just trying to get a good structure and with regards to how we roll this, I'll continue to monitor it and meet our progress. And so that the community also, that communication to the community sees that progress, because prior to the seat, I put a lot of faith in my school committee and my administration, and it's not something that, it's more faith-based. And, and so it's not something that one can see, and I think that's where these questions, well, where's, and I've asked those questions of the superintendent recently, she's been gracious enough to direct me, where does this tie into it, you know? And, and it sits in a different area because it's an, an ongoing, it's not a part of the immediate plan for progress of the goals we're, we're focusing on. So I think communication is still going to be a very, a piece that, that the district will continue to reach out to the community, and, you know, businesses and parents alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other comments? Dr. Quick.
I, funny that you say that, because that's what, I thought, I think your idea's very good, like a halfway point, if we can, and again, like you were saying, Ms. Ben was, you know, you can't, you don't want to overburden or tax, you know, people's time, and it's, you know, hard enough to, not hard enough, but I mean, a lot of time taking, doing surveys, people don't really enjoy doing them, so they tend to just forego them. But I do like the idea of getting some feedback at a halfway point, hopefully, you know, to see how, you know, we see, we see on the forefront how we're going with the goals, but we'd like to see, I think it's a good idea to see how the community and the students themselves see how we're reaching those goals, too. So I like that.
Excellent. Mr. Hayes?
And just to, you know, I don't want to keep going back and forth, but just to answer your question, but first, just to comment on what MJ and Leslie said, that's sort of what I was thinking, you know, with every other year, or at a mid, midway point, two and a half years, I didn't mean to, you know, suggest that we survey, you know, next month or something. So I mean, I wasn't clear, I apologize, but that's exactly what I was thinking, you know, a midway point might be a good time to survey the community, rather than wait a full five years. And then my only, my, my response to Chairwoman Kane is, you know, I don't, I don't think we, I, I laid out the couple of instances where I think we missed something, and, and, you know, I think, you know, we're having the one-to-one placed in the technology, and perhaps, you know, I guess I was mistaken about necessarily having to acknowledge the, the existence of the technology plan in the strategic plan, so that's fine. But, but I guess my, my, my concern would be that the, the plan is going to become out of date or old. I mean, if you look at the timeline for most of the themes, very rarely do you see a year four or a year five. They're generally year one, year two, ongoing. So, I mean, as an example, hopefully, the new high school will be open within, you know, within three years. So we've, we've, you know, if we carry this on to five years, I mean, there's something you can, you can cross off the list, and there are several other items on here where, you know, I don't think it's going to take us five years to accomplish. So that's sort of where I was going. However, you raised the point that, you know, we can always go back and adjust the strategic plan if we think that that's necessary, so if that's something we truly are going to do, then I can certainly live with a five-year plan, knowing that we can adjust it, you know, if, if need be. And obviously, I'm going to listen to the recommendation of the superintendent on something like this, because she's the one that really is, she's the chair of the strategic committee and does most of the work, so I'm certainly sensitive to her, you know, wants and needs and, and recommendation, so.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of Superintendent Benton?
And I, I kind of triggered in reviewing this myself, with regards to how the time, the timelines are annual and ongoing, as opposed to dates of implementation. Is there a way of actually putting a goal target dates of when they're going to be implemented, or, and/or if they're, you know, what the target, because as we've talked about the change piece, we can always revisit and change that. I don't know, I don't know what that looks like. I do say that, so-
In the last strategic plan, every year I do an end-of-year report, and it, based on the strategic plan, and you will see, as the years went through by, things were taken off.
Yeah.
To answer the Robert's question, things were taken off. Other things were adjusted. For example, a good one is elementary science curriculum. That's not been completed, and it's not been completed by choice because the, of the change in the science standards, and we weren't going to purchase curricula. That was going to be outdated in a year. That was going to be outdated in a year because the state was coming out with something new. So you'll see that. So-
I, I, I understand, I definitely understand the, the reason for it. And, but I didn't know if a timeframe as to where, and maybe it's just my, the way my brain processes it, as where, like, a, a year of which it's expected to be implemented. Granted, you might not have that right now, and I understand that, but even if it's a target date-
Sure.
-and that can be revisited and changed, would that be-
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, I thank you.
So we will put this off until, for the vote on-
December.
On December 12th meeting?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll vote on this on December, December 12th meeting. Okay, and our last item is new business, MAS, MAS conference report. Who would like to go first?
I've talked too much already.
Do you want, do you want to?
I'll go first. Yeah, that's okay. Now, Chairwoman Kane was very smart. She told me just to highlight three or four main points.
Three.
Oh, was it three?
Without an introduction.
Thought it was four. So, you know, and I attended eight panel discussions, so a lot to talk about, but I'm just going to touch on four. And these are, would I say those are the four most important? Not necessarily, but other, I think they are important. So maximizing meeting time. So here in Wilmington, we meet 16 times a year. Last year, we met 16 times a year. The year before, we met 16 times a year. This year, we're on, this school year, we're on pace for 16, maybe 17. So our meetings, on average, last 80 minutes, and there's usually two to three substantive items on the agenda other than a superintendent's report. So the question we should all be asking ourselves in every district, not just ours, just to make that clear, are we maximizing the use of our meeting time? Should we meet more? Should we meet less? Would a monthly meeting require us to focus more and work more efficiently? Most importantly, when we meet, what should we discuss? And I'm, I'm just throwing something out here, okay? I'm not, I'm not making any statements.
You know, could I just ask you to put them in context?
Who did this workshop?
Could you say which workshop it was?
Sure. Well, actually, what I'm getting to is all three. So Mike Gilbert, Jim Hardy, and then at the Division One meeting, Nancy, who wrote the, the-
Walzer.
Nancy Walzer. They talked about creating an annual, annual agenda. So the, the many school committees, okay, where was that? So creation of an annual agenda. So the chair and the superintendent map out a school year's worth of meetings, and then they share that map with the committee members. So let's say there are 25 major agenda items that come up every year. So let's say, for example, the review of the strategic plan. So there, let's say there's 25. I don't know how many there are. Maybe there's more, maybe there's a little less. I'd say that's probably, probably a little more. So let's say there are 25 major agenda items that come up every year. Some may be required by law, others by policy, others rooted in, you know, tradition, like when we have the new teachers come in and we have the retiring teachers come, I love those things. So, so you plot out those 25 items across the calendar. And so, and then you provide this calendar at the beginning of the year to every school committee member, so they have a good idea of what to expect throughout the school year. They have a clearer picture of what they will have to accomplish and how it all fits together. And also, in relationship to that, is the grid that was, that Mike Gilbert presented and also Jim Hardy mentioned it in his presentation, on, in terms of deciding what goes on an agenda and what doesn't go on an agenda. And they talked about the student achievement governance operations grid. So if it has, if it has to do with governance, it should probably go on the agenda, where if it has to go to operations, then that's something that should be left up to the superintendent and her team. If it has a high impact on student achievement, it's something we should discuss, whereas if it has a low or no achievement, no impact on student achievement, probably something we shouldn't discuss. So that was, that was my first point. That was my first point. And that was touched upon in several, several meetings.
And could I just add here, they said there's many school committees who only meet once a month. I was really struck by that.
Well, before I was interrupted, I, not that that was, you know, I shouldn't, you know, I was fine. It was a good question. But I, I did, I did, I did, because actually, we were in that meeting together, and half the folks raised their hands, saying they only met once a month. And Shawshank Tech School Committee only meets once a month, the Essex Aggie School Committee only meets once a month, so. And besides this selectman, we're the only town border committee that meets regularly more than once a month, so. Just throwing those things out there. No, I'm not saying, you know, it's-
Are you making a recommendation?
No, I'm not making a recommendation. I'm just, that, that is just, that is, well, you know, I've just something to think about in the future. Policy, a policy manual. And this one we touched, we, we spoke briefly about Peggy. So policy manual should be updated every three to, and this was with Mike Gilbert's, okay? A policy manual should be updated every three to five years, and so we're approaching year seven since the current policy manual was adopted. So I think the policy subcommittee is in big trouble here. We need, we, we, I guess, I guess, and I guess what we need to do is, we, we need some direction from the superintendent and from the school committee in terms of how the policy subcommittee should go about updating the policy manual. There's 330 policies in that 400-plus-page manual. So, you know, I'm not, I guess, I guess seven or eight years ago, you actually brought MAS C in to, to help you along, but-
We met over 18 months.
18 months, yeah.
And just sort of every week.
And spent a lot of money.
Yeah, and spent a lot of money. So, so I don't want to spend a lot of money, but that's something we need to think about. And frankly, you know, I'm, I'm the chair of the subcommittee, but I've only been chair for less than a year. I'm not very familiar with really best practices in this regard. So, you know, let me know how you think we should go about tackling this policy manual. Self-assessment. So according to our school committee policy, BAA, the school committee is supposed to evaluate itself on an annual basis. And so I did attend a, a class, a panel called School Committee Self-Evaluation, and MAS C for free is willing to come out and train us on how to evaluate ourselves. And they gave us, they gave me this instrument. I do have extras, I don't have 10, though. And it's just really, I'm not going to go through all of them, but they list 16 benefits of why we should evaluate ourselves every year. And, you know, we pretty much evaluate everything, and if you think about it, you step back, we pretty much evaluate everything in the school system except for ourselves, right? So, and so it's probably something that, that we should do. And the beauty of this is you're not evaluating individual members, you're evaluating the team as a whole. And, you know, it's something that I think I'm going to have, I'm going to ask the Roman House to photocopy maybe this booklet and pass it out to all the school committee members so they have a better idea. But, you know, according to policy, we're supposed to do it annually. I got the sense at that meeting that most committees don't do it annually, so I don't think we're like, you know, way off track, but I think it is something we should do. And then my fourth, I'm sorry, Peggy, is civics, 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 okay? So I like civics, too. So I attended, I attended a panel discussion on civics, civic engagement, and got some good notes here. So through curriculum, extracurricular activities, and student government, civic participation must be strengthened among students. In Boston, for example, eighth graders must take a half-year course in civics. But at any class, just take what kids are passionate about and ask them to prove that there's a problem, identify allies, explain why the allies haven't already solved the problem, and propose a solution to the problem. Teachers should view students as being able to contribute collectively through their communities. Student governments shouldn't just be for planning school dances, but they should also review policy and curriculum. Extracurriculars, extracurriculars should be driven not by what the teachers want, but by what the students want. So if the students want a manga club, or a snowboarding club, or a yoga club, and I think all these clubs exist here in Wilmington High, then those clubs should be offered and run as much as possible by the kids. Kids don't practice citizenship, they practice baseball, they practice cellos, but not every kid grows up to be a baseball player or a cello, celloist, but every kid grows up to be a citizen. I like that line. So we need to give our kids the opportunities to practice citizenship every day in school, and schools need to prepare students for the three Cs, not just college and career, but also citizenship. And I think I hit every big line that she said, so I wrote it all down. So, so that, that's it for me. So maximizing meeting time, policy manual, self-assessment, and civics.
Excellent.
And I could go on for another three hours with everything else I learned.
Thank you. Our feeling was, at the time, when we were going to come to report to you, that we all learned in different, we, some we did the same, some we did our own, but as we come across these things during the school year, rather than us give you a big report on everything, we bring up what we learned about that particular topic as we come across them. So we thought this tonight would be just better to have an overview for what we enjoyed. So, Ms. Burns.
Well, Robert actually spoke to a lot of the, I, my little PowerPoint here-
Yeah.
-so I won't go into it. And you pretty much covered all the points. I was going to, the keys-
I'm sorry, you should have put it in.
No, that's okay, you saved me time. No. I, I did want to say that, two things, since you've said most of it, is that I took a panel discussion, actually, on the Finland experience. And I can, I can absolut, oh, because you generated that interest for me. And I was very excited and intrigued by the Finnish government and how their schools operate and how their teachers operate. And I think that there's a, Mrs. Benton had spoken previously about it when she'd seen the movie, about some of the tools that they use, like, there's no special ed classes outside of those kids who have more severe cognitive and/or physical impairments. Children with learning disabilities, language-based learning disabilities, all that is, is brought into the classroom, and each child is taught to their learning style. And there's such a huge support for teachers. It's, the government actually negotiates with the union. So it's not districts, it's, the government does the union piece, and teachers are held in very high esteem with that. And just that, all the aspects of how, granted, a lot of what they do and what they can do is really based culturally, and it's very, it's a very homonaj, I'm not going to articulate it correctly, homonaj, homono-
Homogenous.
Thank you so much.
Homogenous.
Forgive me, it's caffeine.
Couldn't think of it either.
Thank you. And, and that's where, I, they, they feel that that's where it works, but there's a lot to be, a lot of good thoughts to be taken away from the way that they run their schools and, and the teacher, high-skilled level teachers. Their daycare providers have to have, if I understood it correctly, master degrees in, in these educations. And you have to test into these universities, into these courses, and the top third of students who graduate are the ones who actually get teaching positions. And those who don't go through, go through the courses, courses again until they get to that, that level. And speaking from my hip, because I wasn't expecting to speak to it, but I was very impressed, and I think we, there's a lot that we can learn moving forward with our growth in professional development and our mentor, mentorship, you know, that we could take away from it. The other panel discussion that, I took one on labor negotiations, especially with the evaluations that are coming down. I think I just scraped the barrel of what, the understanding behind it, but there's a, there was a lot of good information and talk with regards to, it was presented by three attorneys, and forgive me, I apologize, I, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly which firms they, their school firms that they represent, but they spoke about the negotiations with teacher contracts and superintendent contracts as these new evaluations come through, what to be aware of, what not to budge on. I have all my notes, I spent three hours typing them up, and I'd be happy to pass on any of my bullet points from those panel discussions. And the last one that has me a little nervous, and I think it's part of it because I'm the newbie, is the new superintendent evaluations that are coming down. Ed Costa, who's the superintendent in Lulow, they are not race to the top school, but they have implemented the evaluation process in preparation for when they are expecting to execute it next year, as sort of like a dry run of sorts, which I thought was a great idea, and it's a huge learning experience, he stated, for his teachers as well as for himself. And I, I really think that the committee, I know Mrs. Benton thought it would, would be, if I don't mind speaking for you, a good idea to actually have MAS C come in and speak to exactly what the superintendent evaluation entails now, because it's a very detail-oriented, we all, and we have to write responses for each of the goals that she puts before, before herself. And it's, it's very involved, and I'm trying not to be overwhelmed all at once with all the information I gained, but I, I think it's a critical tool, and so that, that would be an easy transition. And knowing that we're ahead of the game, I, I thought that, you know, executing that would be sooner than later, before we're, it's due per se, or, you know, and any questions we may have surrounding it, we can clear that up prior to the, the beginning of, you know, implementing it.
Can I just add one thing? Because I had, I am the president of the Merrimack Valley Superintendent Association. Today, we had the same presentation you had on the Finland, from Tom Scott and Maureen LaCroy and Tony Hunt. And the one piece that you didn't talk about that I, I was fascinated with, besides the whole special ed piece, was the evaluation. Principals do not go into teachers' classrooms.
Parents and students.
Parents and students evaluate the teachers in Finland, and it works.
And the other point that I thought was very fascinating that they spoke to is that there's no school attorneys.
Right.
They don't exist. Although they, he said that there was some interest in it as to what that is, he didn't go into it, because I don't think they really knew and nor was it part of their time, but they don't have school attorneys or, you know, the parents, and a lot of the times, too, the parents defer to, because they're such high-skilled, the top of the top, parents defer to the teachers and the communication, the, the level of education they're coming out with is, you know, there are differences. They don't do homework, you know, when they're, they're out, they're out. But the curriculum and everything is pretty much on par with what we're doing, and they are actually, Massachusetts actually is taking part in a year or so, maybe you can correct me, Mrs. Benton, with regards to the national identification test?
Yeah.
Is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm.
Which is an international test-
Yes, right.
-that kind of scores students in, in different areas across the world. And I think this is the first time Massachusetts will be involved in, in that type of testing, which I thought was interesting as well.
Maureen LaCroy said the thing that she, one concept that she took away from visiting all the schools is trust. There's a, you, a, an overwhelming trust in the educational system in Finland. Anyway, I, I concur with you. I was fascinated by it.
I, I mean, there's so many different points that they spoke, that was fascinating that I, um, but if anybody would like, I'd be happy to email my little bullet points to those panels.
And I did buy the CD, if anybody's interested in borrowing it to see the Finland problem.
I'd like to, I'm all excited about it.
And Mr. Hayes?
I just wanted to say, too, that I haven't typed up my notes yet, but once I do, you know, fair game for anyone who would like, talk about bedtime reading. But, but, you know, you'll be more than happy, I can email them to you, you know, no problem.
And I'd like to say, I'm not typing up my notes, so I'm sorry. I'll let the-
And this is a reference point.
The newbies typing up the notes, that's, that's great. But I, I will add them in when we go along with different things over the course of the year. I'll add those in. I went a little bit philosophical. Mine's pretty much shorter than that, but three important ideas that I gained from the convention. First of all, it is essential that the school board and the superintendent work together as a leadership team, understanding and respecting their different but complementary roles as they focus on policy, which was, that was really quite emphasized in some of the, the talks that I heard. I loved this one. Think of the kids not just as a jumble of needs, but as contributors to society. Schools are set up to disempower kids when we strip student responsibilities away. Recalibrate. Think of kids having capacities to transform communities. So instead of putting responsibility on us, they were suggesting, it was the same one that Robert did on, that he was talking about, she was excellent on civic responsibility. And I'm hoping that eventually that can come up in our community, we can talk about how to get civics into the curriculum. You don't have to have a whole year of it, you can just work through it. And then, this is just my summary of this. Educators have a great sense of humor, as well as a desire to excel, to share, to teach, to borrow, to collaborate, and to help students succeed. The Departments of Education need to excel, to share rather than create competitors, to borrow ideas at work from the educators, to encourage classroom teachers to collaborate on their committees, the Department of Education committees, rather than comprise them mainly of businessmen, and to help students to succeed. The state's new evaluation system is going to be a challenge for us all. Wait till we start working on that. People have no idea. So there was a lot we, when Mrs. Benton decides on how this is going to be done through our our system and lets us know, we definitely need training, there's no question about it.
We have, we had our, our next meeting is November 28th, and what we have decided to do, we came up with some common understandings, Kate's on the committee, wouldn't you agree? And we're bringing contract language from communities that have already settled, and actually going to go through that and see what we can, we're not going to reinvent the wheel and see what we can come to agreement on, so.
Because MJ hit on, that was the other major thing, on the evaluations, not just even the superintendent, yes, that's a nervous, racking one, but the, I think principals, like, one of the communities hired two people to, to evaluate. Would you want someone coming in off the street evaluating you? That's their sole role now, so.
The time involved in these evaluations, for those who are implementing it now, is, I mean, they had no, they had no choice, because you needed an extra body to do, or implement everything that these new evaluations now require. And it's, I mean, and that's why I think, I'm glad I took the panel on the superintendent evaluation, as well as that labor negotiation, even though I'm not, I don't serve on it, because it's, it's trickle effect. This evaluation trickles out in every aspect now within the district, and it will have to, you know, eventually impact more than just contracts.
It's going to be very, very interesting next two years in our community, for sure.
I, um-
Okay, yes.
I just wanted to, FYI, regarding the delegation meeting that happened.
Oh, at the end.
At the end. We actually, it was under an hour.
It's still record.
I know, I left while it was still light out. Just to summarize, Resolution One, Two, one, which was the Special Commission of the Legislature, Legislature, for the study of mandated reports and data submissions passed without discussion. Two, which was the modification of the circuit breaker formula, also passed without any debate. Four, which was the funding for the education evaluation system, also passed without debate, although, yep. And Five, which was the adequacy study for funding properly public schools, they were passed as written, with Resolution Three, which is one of the concerns that we had brought up regarding the resolution of health insurance coverage for medically necessary treatment. It passed with a lot of debate, mostly generated by me. But I think what, what spoke to, I voted for it in the end, but what it spoke to, which had no language reference in it in the resolution, was that this was written with regards to the national healthcare being implemented, and not as things stand now. I still spoke to, that you can't go just on that, because private insurances are still going to prevail, and they're going to find another loophole. But the debate, it was a good debate, and eventually it did pass. I voted to do so and take into consideration that this is not the first time this resolution has come up and has been voted, has been, it hasn't gone anywhere at the state level. On Resolution Six, which was the resolution that we all got late, pertains to the election of governing boards of Commonwealth charter schools. It passed with an exception of, in the verbiage where it says elected officials or appointed, there was a play on, and they just corrected the verbiage to reflect appointees as well as elected officials in determining the board of directors for any possible charter school. So I, if you have any question, I voted for it, I hope you didn't mind me taking that position. I thought I understood it significantly, effectively, sufficiently, to, especially after the discussion, to make a decision. So I passed, I did approve it, and that was it.
And we appreciate you waiting there late into the afternoon.
Oh, you're welcome.
I hope that next year they make a change in that. That doesn't seem quite fair.
Well, I think there's a reason why they put it at that point.
Yeah, I do, too. I think you're right. But, thank you, we appreciate your, taking your time.
You're very welcome.
And doing that and going home and-
It was a good experience. I'm glad I took it, it was a great experience, great civic experience.
Yes, it all comes around, excellent.
Mrs. Quin?
Yes.
I just wanted to say-
Oh, sorry, Dr. Quin.
I just wanted to say thank you, because it's a long, it's a long, you know, few days, so I just want to thank you three for going down and doing that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public comments? Other, other reports? I don't think we've had any, oh, Dr. Quin?
Of course, every month. Okay, so-
That went by fast.
I know, doesn't it? Well, yesterday, we had the Wilmington Educational Foundation WEF meeting, and we went over the amounts that was, that were raised for the Halloween Walk for WEF, and I'm pleased to say, we, the schools managed to raise $16,038.30, which is wonderful. However, I'm hoping that, you know, it actually is less than it has been in the last few years, so I'm hoping that next year we'll, we'll get that back up there again. I think we can do it, and, and the teachers, the, you know, the teachers and staff do a great job at trying to give incentives to the kids to, you know, get, get that money raised, because, again, half that money that each school raises goes directly back to that school for something, to fund something that they need that year, which is huge, and it's really important to the schools. So I think some of the teachers had very specific things in mind and a certain amount to attain. So that was a very big success, as it always is, and the kids have a ball, so I love going and watching the kids. And then a couple, just another point, was that we're really hoping, we're just starting to plan for our new spring fundraiser, which is going to be a spelling bee this year. We have a lot of, a lot of planning in the midst, so we're going to, I'll be keeping you updated on that. And then, we're hoping, again, to be able to, well, I think we will definitely be voting on continuing the STEAM Fair, the STEM Fair, but maybe it might be called the STEAM Fair this year, I don't know. But again, in alignment with technology and science, the WEF is really trying to support that aspect of educational experience.
Will the catapult be back?
Well, I don't know, you have to ask, you have to ask Ms. Burnham, it's in her garage, right?
That's right. In storage.
To storage. There's no other place it can fit, she's been so nice to store it there, so she'll have to drag it out and bring it back, but yes.
Excellent.
And we're looking for a team-
With a spelling bee.
Yes.
Or the school committee, so be thinking-
Oh, no.
Oh, God, no. Terrible.
Are you going down to first grade for spelling?
No.
Well, probably not this year, we're going to, it's probably going to be, we're thinking it's going to be adults. These are some of the things we have to work out, but we think this year might be just adults, and then kind of go from there, and see how it goes.
All right, we're going to have to put our names in a hat, and mine won't be there.
I don't think we'll have to do that.
Oh, you volunteering?
No.
Oh, good, oh, Judy, oh, that sounds good.
I'll think about it.
We need four.
Four in a team?
I'll do it.
Yeah, Dr. Quin will do it.
I'll try my hand.
I know, and I do it.
I'll arm wrestle you for the last spot, Manny.
Do you want to do it, Robert?
No, no, I'm a loser, no, no, you misunderstand.
So that's why I spell potato.
Okay, great.
So everybody just think about, from the community, think about teams, because we want lots of teams.
Oh, that would be fun, yeah. That's a great idea.
It's in March.
Very clever.
Where is it?
March 14th.
We don't know yet.
We think it's going, we think it's tonight, but we're going to confirm that.
Nothing has been confirmed at this point. That's why I said a lot of planning.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Excellent, very nice. Okay, any other, no other, correspondence? No correspondence this week. And our future meeting dates, on November 28th. It's been requested that we attend the, what is it called?
Parents' night on substance abuse.
Coalition.
Coalition.
Coalition, at the middle school, and it's at seven o'clock, it'll be at seven o'clock. Okay. And then on December 12th, although we are going to do the strategic plan that night, we'll do it quickly, because that's going to be a budget night.
Starting at six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Okay, and that's the night that the administrative, the principals and things will be coming, so for packing, just keep that in mind, that they'll be here. Okay. Do we have, on the 12th, December 12th? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I love it when I say that, nobody does anything.